This conference will now be recorded.
First thing on the agenda is the agenda itself. Does anyone have anything? Okay, moving on. So in general, so this is the open to the public for items not related to the agenda. So in general, for the meeting, we'll have planning commissioners and presenters or staff with their cameras on and everyone else with their cameras off unless you're trying to get our attention. So if somebody would like to say something under this agenda item, you can turn your camera on or unmute. So does anyone have anything for open to the public for items not related to the agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing anything in the chat or anyone unmuted, so we can move to the next item, which is announcements and staff report. Does anyone have any announcements? I had one last week on Tuesday, the 6th. I attended the city council meeting where they talked about essentially what we had talked about the meeting before, the eight areas in the southeast quadrant in general, and our general approach to conservation and development in the southeast quadrant. Only four of the counselors were there and they spoke on both behalf of open space and new neighborhoods. So it was kind of a mix of opinions. And I think we can kind of circle back to their specific individual responses as we get a little further and start really thinking about like where we might apply the different tools. So kind of in the next couple of meetings, we can revisit those areas as well as counselor feedback. And I guess kind of related to that meeting. So the council meeting wasn't what you would call a joint meeting. It was essentially them talking about one of our items and I attended on our behalf. And I guess I just wanted to say that for future meetings, unless it's a joint meeting, I always want to make sure it's really clear who's representing the commission versus speaking for themselves. There was a little bit of confusion with one of the commissioners kind of leaving camera on and using the word "we" when possibly speaking for just an individual perspective. So I guess I just want to say that I always try to kind of give the whole picture of what we've talked about and really summarize our actions and decisions as a group and always try to point out whether we aren't unanimous. But I think in general, it's kind of confusing for the council and the public if there's like minority opinions kind of mixed into the discussion without being clear about, you know, individual versus summary of our discussions. Michael and then Monica?
Yeah, I suspect it was me not being clear on those rules that as a commissioner, I shouldn't be expressing any views at a meeting other than a joint meeting. Is that what I understand to be the case?
I think in general, I mean, I think there's always a place for all public to weigh in. But I do think that, you know, with your camera on and kind of many different responses and responding back to counselors, I think it did muddy the waters on what might have been kind of commission decisions versus, you know, personal opinions. So I think that was, you know, the general idea. So in the future, I think we'll try to maybe be a little more clear on which is which.
So it means that one commissioner cannot speak as a commissioner unless it's a joint meeting?
Unless you identify that you're speaking on behalf of yourself or maybe I think it's not a clear yes or no answer because, you know, maybe I forgot a piece of the discussion that we had all talked about and it was really important to point out because it kind of informed group decisions or group thinking. So I think like a clarification or something that's added a specific thing would make sense.
Okay.
Yeah, Monica and then Ted?
So I actually was listening in on that meeting and I was very upset and I felt, you know, worked through it. And I did speak to Jessica. I raised my concern to Jessica, so I knew that she was going to mention this. And this is not about looking back and Michael, I just want to let you know that, okay? This is not about looking back, okay? But I too have to be very careful when I show up at a meeting and start saying things that I'm not representing more than just myself. But I do think that there was something said and I went back and looked at the video to make sure that I heard it correctly. And I also know that sometimes when someone goes back and looks at a video, they don't realize what they said. So something was said and I just wanted the commission to know it. So it is kind of going back, but I wanted it to be very clear to the council that that statement does not represent the planning commission. And if it does, then I'm mistaken. So if it makes sense, I can read this statement. And I'm sorry, Michael, I do not mean to put you on the spot, but I want to say what these words were because I do disagree with them, yet the city council was left with this thought. So please correct me if there's something in here that is correct that I do not think is. The statement was, "I'm sorry to say, the council's acceptance of the open space report gave it no regulatory force. And the planning commission has not used the open space report at all. Fortunately, the Arrowhead Habitat Block assessments, the habitat blocks identified coincided with many of those 25 parcels that were in the open space report, but nothing was done by the commission with that report. So yes, the reports were commissioned and acknowledged, but they didn't have any bearing on what the planning commission has done so far." I don't find that to be accurate at all. I think it is a poor reflection on what we have done because we have referred back to the open space multiple times and it's been in all of our mapping tools. And I just was very concerned that at this point in our process, the council, and I see that Jessie's on our call today and Jessie is new to the city, I was very alarmed that she was hearing a statement like this. So I guess it's, A, to Jessica's point, how can we all make sure that if we do have an issue, we raise it among each other before perhaps a city council meeting rather than at a city council meeting? And secondly, if something is said by us that is inaccurate, what process can we follow to clarify that? Because unless I'm mistaken, I do not find this statement to be accurate at all. So it's a two-part question and I am bringing this quote to us so that we can be constructive and helpful in the future. It's not so much to duke out the past.
Yeah, I guess I would say also if I or whoever is in front of the commission like officially representing us say something that's inaccurate or not a complete truth, I would want that pointed out to me, so.
And you did. And to which I did not respond.
Well, I did.
Madam Chair, this is a completely inappropriate discussion. I cannot have a debate with you or Monica about this. The fact that you allowed Monica to give a dissertation on what I said is totally inappropriate.
Well, I wasn't trying to.
If you want to dispute about it, because there are factual inaccuracies in what Monica has said. There were certain words that I used, which was among other things, and that's a good thing that I'm missing. I don't want to get into that. We don't have the time to waste on this kind of thing. It's totally inappropriate that you've allowed this to happen.
All right, well, I wasn't trying to have anything happen other than to point out a process that would be helpful for the future, so. So I apologize.
I'm not going to respond because I don't think we have the time for that. I can respond some other time.
Yeah, but my whole point is that if there is dirty laundry, we need to have that discussion as a committee together. I think that this is a false statement and it made a false representation of our commission. And if we don't discuss it here openly among each other, when do we do that? Because saying what was said here, unless, I don't know if we do a show of hands, does everyone here agree that the planning commission has not used the open space report at all during inclusionary zoning?
That's not what I said. That is not what I said.
Michael, I have the video of your clip. I wrote it down. And I can share it with anyone who wants to see it.
I don't want to put anybody on the spot here, Monica, and if you force me to do it, I will. There was a statement made very early when this report was issued that it would not be used by the planning commission for any regulatory purpose. And that is fact. Finished. I will not respond any further.
And that's fine, Michael. And I actually was not trying to put anyone on the spot. I, you know, addressed that at the council meeting, kind of how we've used it and specified that you were right in the sense that we haven't regulated parcels using parcel boundaries. So, I mean, I think it's been taken care of. I was just trying to make sure for the future we're being clear.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. Ted, did you have something?
But I'm sorry, I'm not clear on where we're leaving this, though. Like what, I'm sorry Ted, I'm not sure where we're leaving this in terms of, okay, if we can forget about the past. But going forward, I'd like to understand what the commission's policy is on if Jessica or an identified person is to represent the commission, what is the appropriate participation of other members from the commission within that?
Okay, Duncan, did you have a thought there?
I think that any commissioners who attend a meeting and are not there on the purview of the council should be very clear when they speak that they are speaking on behalf of themselves and not the commission. That's pretty simple. We appoint a person to go speak for us and if you're not that person, you're speaking your opinion, not the commission's purview.
Ted, did you have something related to that or?
No, something totally different.
Okay. Okay, and I'm sorry I brought it up. I know we had talked about this in the context of social media and emails before, but we hadn't really talked about it in behalf of other meetings as well, so. And I think that if commissioners feel like something's come up at a meeting which is not correct, I think emailing me and staff just to make sure that kind of it gets out there and we can bring it back if we feel like we need to or correct it at the body, something was said. But I think in this case, it was addressed at the meeting, so I don't think there's any follow-up.
It's clear to me that in future, I will use the word "I" and never use the word "we" so that it's clear who I'm speaking on behalf of and that is myself.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. And I'm sorry if you felt targeted in any way because I think it applies to all of us. So Ted, something different?
Yep, I think we need a group hug. Anyway. Two things. You may have noticed signs all over the city periodically. It's not Wendell's Warehouse. It's now it's having your house sides cleaned, you know, the wall, outside walls cleaned. And the reason I point that out is we do have a sign ordinance and I think we need to encourage the staff in the city to handle it. And I guess the best way to do it is to call someone, probably the public works because they are authorized, although they're not then on the weekends when most of these things are out there. But we have an ordinance, it should be maintained. If we don't want it, then we should probably remove the ordinance and have these signs. That's one thing. Second thing is, two weeks ago, Helen and I attended, I guess it was the second of the series of Thursday nights at Veterans Memorial Park. And we were astounded at how many people were out there. Of course, everyone wants to get out of their houses, but it was, one of the people there felt that it was a record attendance, which was exciting. You know, Helen and I and Hugh was there and also Donna Laban, she was here somewhere. Hope you don't mind me mentioning it. And we all agreed that we only knew one or two people out of that crowd of hundreds or more. And, you know, between Helen and Hugh and others who've gone door to door, it's pretty remarkable. You don't know where all these people are, but it was exciting. A lot of young families hate to be looked at as a senior citizen there, but certainly that was the case. But anyway, it was very, very nice to see that event. So just two things. Thanks.
Thanks, Ted. Anyone else have any announcements? Or Paul, do you have any staff report items that weren't in the packet?
Hi, folks. I do have a couple of things. Let me just get my notes here. So I'm sitting here at City Hall and this is a historic night because this is, although I'm alone in this room, the last ever city meeting taking place at 575 Dorset Street. I walked upstairs today and it is barren. It is a very odd sight to see. But the building will be used again by the school district. They were scoping it out last Friday, which is great to be reusing a building and we are just so excited to be in the new 180 Market Street, which leads me to my next piece, which I'm sure Jessie Baker is going to speak about in a moment. But next Friday is the official grand opening, the 23rd. Hopefully you've gotten an invitation for it, but we're really excited to have everyone there. And then last thing is just a little piece of housekeeping related to the move. The city servers and web are going to be down tomorrow and possibly Thursday and Friday. That includes your S-Burl email accounts. So all of us and all of you will be down as the servers are physically being moved and reconnected. We've got a great team who are very excited about getting it done in one day, but we've given them a little bit more latitude for the gremlins that notoriously appear in these kinds of things. So those are my announcements. Oh, one other one, sorry, related to tonight's meeting. Sharon Murray was going to join us. She had a family emergency. Her husband was in the hospital over the weekend. She, good news, they literally just got home 20 minutes ago. So she's going to watch the video of the meeting and catch up that way, but obviously they're just getting home and settling. So she'll be here for your next meeting on the 27th, but for tonight, she'll just catch up on the video. That's what I got.
Great. Thanks, Paul. So we have our new city manager, Jessie Baker here. So welcome, Jessie. We're so excited. I've heard amazing things from some friends who live in the city you used to work in. So I'm happy we stole you away. And I don't know if Paul or anyone has more of an introduction or Jessie, if you just want to say hi?
Sure, I can jump in. Can everyone hear me okay? Thumbs up, great. Well, I know you have an enormous work plan ahead of you, not only for tonight but for the upcoming meetings, so I don't want to take too much of your time. But I did want to pop in and introduce myself and answer any questions you may have for me. I'm not going to go over my resume and background because folks are hopefully familiar with that at this point. But thank you for the kind words, Jessica, and at some point we'll have to swap some Winuski stories. A couple of things I did want to observe just from watching this conversation that happened earlier as well as watching the council meeting last week. You all have an enormous task in front of you. I'm coming in at the 11th and a half hour. I know you've been working really hard on interim zoning, some of you, for many years and you are at the last leg and it is still really hard. And you have a lot of diverse perspectives, not only on your body but on the council as well. From a governance perspective, that creates some significant challenges. So I wanted to acknowledge the hard work that you all are doing to volunteer your time to move our community forward and just acknowledge that that is being done in a really challenging governance environment. And to that end, I would encourage each of you, as you think about these kind of final discussions and final votes you take as you wrap up interim zoning, you know, really think about what's best for the entire community of South Burlington. Who are you representing as planning commissioners? What would you like their future to be? And how that plays out in the LDRs and the recommendations you all will make to council? I think you and the council are at a point where governance is really important. You've had a lot of theoretical conversations, a lot of conversations about visions and values. And really now you're at a point where you need to move something forward. I can share with you that I've already started having conversations with the counselors as well about how I can support them to do that governance work with you as you bring forward the LDRs to the council. And so I'm hoping to be able to be a support in some of those conversations. Jessica, I know you're working incredibly hard to be balanced and representative but still include all voices at the table. And I think that there are some processes we could put in place at the council level to help that happen as well. So finally, and again, happy to answer any questions you all have of me. But I would just encourage you in these last couple of meetings, when things will continue to be heated, to have, you know, as much grace and patience with each other as you can. You're all doing a really hard thing and you're doing that, you're doing that in a controversial environment. Be patient with one another and I know that the product you bring forward will be in the best interest of all South Burlington residents. So I will stop there, but I'm happy to answer any questions or take any comments. Jessica, do you want me to call on? Go for it.
You can, if you want. Ted?
Let me throw you a softball. How do you balance the wishes or interests of the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission and local interests?
Oh, that's definitely a softball, Ted. How do I balance CCR? Well, CCRP's, C's interest in theory should still be South Burlington's interest in that we have representation on that board. Staff clearly work quite closely with that board. They bring expertise to the table. I think in how I've worked with CCRPC in the past is they are kind of conduits of funding and consultant services and conduits of best practice and information that we then in Winuski used to bring to the local appointed and elected officials for them to make the policy decisions for the community. That's how I've seen it work well in the past. I'm not sure exactly what you're getting at and I would be happy to talk more with you about that, but that would be my approach to working. That has been my approach to working with CCRPC.
Okay, that's a start. Thank you.
Anyone, any other commissioners or members of the public have any questions or comments for Jessie?
Well, Jessica, if it's okay with you, I'm learning this lesson of turning the camera off when you're not supposed to speak. That's how we did it in Winuski, so I'm getting used to it. So if you don't mind, I will turn my camera off and just lurk and listen to your conversation for a while. And again, I'm just thrilled to be part of this community and be in this position. So I look forward to working with all of you in the months and years to come. Paul, did I miss anything big you wanted me to highlight?
No, I just wanted to say that, you know, I and my whole team are also very excited to have Jessie on board. We had the pleasure and honor of having Jessie sitting in our office area for the last month or so, so we get to know her a little bit better than everybody else. I've also had the pleasure of working with Jessie on lots of projects before this and she's just an incredible choice made by the city council. And, you know, it's huge shoes to fill of Kevin's. But Jessie is going to do a great job with it and we're really excited at the staff level for her leadership and to be working with her on all sorts of really, really amazing projects in this dynamic community, so.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Jessie. Paul. Great, so we can move on. So it is perfect timing to start our public hearing for the proposed amendments to the official map, which was warned for 7:25. We have a pretty extensive memo as well as the report that goes along with the official map and the map itself in our packet. I think it might make sense to just start off with the public hearing, which we need to move to open. Somebody can speak up. Michael?
I move, sorry. To open the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the official map, number OM-21-02 and number OM-21, they're both the same.
It should be O1 and O2. Sorry about that.
O1 and O2.
I'll second. Okay, it looks like Monica seconded, all in favor of opening the public hearing. I see all hands up, so that is unanimous. So public hearing is open. Paul, was there anything you wanted to start out with right before public comment?
Just a couple of quick notes for you. One, you did get one letter in your package, in your packet, from John Dinklage. One was also received just about an hour ago. You may not have seen it, from Lisa Kingsbury from UVM. Her note was that she and they are supportive of the removal of the roadway that connects IDX Drive to Deerfield through the UVM pork farm there in support of the proposed amendment. And then just quickly for you all, I did put this in the memo, but just for anybody looking, there are some changes to the map that are not, under state law, do not require any planning commission action. They're just things that have happened in the community. So when a subdivision is approved or when a section of rec path or roadway is built under state law, that automatically updates the official map. So those have been done. If anybody sees any that we've missed, this was a big project from folks at the CCRPC to help us look at every one of them. If we missed any, let us know. That just updates automatically. So those are my only notes for you.
Okay. We also did receive one other public comment that I forwarded around from Nick Moncuso. Probably not pronouncing that correctly. So it should be in your email and it was about the Swift Street extension piece of the map. Did everyone see that? I don't know that I need to read it if people have. I'm seeing a few nods.
I saw it this evening.
Okay. Great, then it sounds like people have seen the concern about continuing to have that road extend through the Habitat Block and, you know, some of the Habitat Block values here listed, so. One thing I did notice is that the text on the map refers to number two. Paul, if you scroll down a little bit, you can see the map has some text. Blue circle, blue circle number two has been actually removed from the map because it's one of those items that Paul referred to as automatic because it already happened. So it's not actually shown on the map, but the text is still there. So I just wanted to point out that I think that would be one of those automatic changes so that that text would remove. Is that correct, Paul?
That's correct. Thank you for pointing that out and we will remove it in the version that goes to the council because that adding a second off-ramp lane has been constructed.
Okay, so the public hearing is open unless somebody on the commission has some kind of clarifying comment of some kind, I think we'll go to the public for comment. So members of public can speak up. You can turn your camera on, you can unmute, could put something in the chat. And maybe everyone's already said their piece. We did get quite a bit of public comment earlier in the process. The last few meetings, we did talk about this item. We want to make sure people would like to say something. Sarah? Sarah, Doc?
Hi, I'll just get the ball rolling. I'm sure there'll be more comments if somebody just steps up and makes one. It's just an observation. It's just an observation of mine on the Swift Street Extension piece and the replacement of the road with a rec path, which I strongly endorse. That's really good. I know that this was discussed pretty fully at the previous, at a previous meeting before the public hearing. But it seems to me that maybe we don't really need two prongs to this path. You know, I understand the reasoning and all, but I'm thinking about not laying down more impermeable surface than we need to, you know, laying down additional asphalt. When both of those arms get out to Heinsberg Road in pretty close proximity, I'm not sure I care which one gets chosen, but I'd love it if there'd be some discussion of one versus two. And to me, it might make more sense. Not sure exactly of the lay of the land there on the ground, but the one that weaves into the neighborhood rather than cutting straight across seems to me that it might save more impermeable surface. So that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Sarah. Donna Levin?
Yeah, I I'm speaking as myself and not as a member of the Bike and Ped Committee because we really haven't discussed this issue at all in Bike and Ped. But the issue about connectivity of two Veterans Park and the Swift Street and the rest of the path system and this issue of the the two prongs of of rec path going to Heinsberg Road. I mean, I I I live quite close to that, so I I do have a chance to walk in those areas, particularly in the wintertime on snowshoes. And I think one, one thing that people need to be clear is that the the forest block is a forest block, but it, but the whole lot is not. And so I would encourage that if you are going to have two prongs of of rec path, that it, that it branch off far enough up the hill so it doesn't actually affect the the forest area. It's it's quite dense. And, you know, I'd hate to see a path kind of, you know, a bulldozer going through, going through some of the forest area to cut that path. However, my understanding is this won't, this likely will not happen until the development at the Hill Farm happens. Is that correct? Yeah, because I, I mean, I don't think there's money in the city to pay for this right now. But is that, is that correct? That that both, all of this path would be developed as part of the Hill Farm development?
Paul, do you want to answer that? I believe Donna is right.
Well, so let me answer the question as it relates specifically to the official map. So the official maps tool is, as Donna is describing, that it is public facilities that need to be accommodated when development occurs. That's the purpose of the official map. If the city through the Bike Ped Committee and and ultimately the the Capital Improvement Plan as a separate tool decides to advance, to work with property owners and advance bike paths on private property, that's a separate tool in the toolbox that can be considered, but it is not presently in the capital improvement plan. So that would really come out of the Bike Ped Committee. This tool, as Donna is describing, is specifically about private, public facilities that need to be accommodated when public, when private development occurs.
Right, so all, my, my basic comment is that, yes, I do think that there should be a connection between the the path that extends off of Swift Street and Langdon Drive. But I would discourage, I would discourage any developer from, you know, cutting through forest land to build it because there's, there's actually plenty of meadow, open meadow, not that far up the hill. That that typically is what people in snowshoes and hikers use now. So I don't, don't, I don't want people to construe that, you know, the lines on the map, on the, on the comprehensive map, that that means that that would destroy any natural resources. That's pretty much my comment.
Great, thanks, Tona. Just to respond to Sarah's comment, I see in the chat that Justin Stinnott said, Sarah, I agree with just the south path. Thank you. And then Sandy's having trouble getting the package. I don't know, Paul, if you have a way to email it to her. It's hard for me to do that right now.
Pretty dark.
Great, thank you. And then we have one more public comment in the chat, which I'm going to read, and then we can have Monica go. Catherine Maynard, my husband and I are in favor of tabling, in favor of tabling of the proposed Swift Street Extension and support the creation just a path for recreational use, protecting the natural forest area and respecting wetlands should also be, always be priorities in planning. We live on Rand Farm Drive. We need to preserve as much open space as possible for purposes other than cars. Thank you, Catherine. And another Ernie says, I agree with Catherine. So Monica, her hand up?
I know that we're listening to the public, but I just wanted, this might help clarify. And Paul, I was trying to find in the memo, we did discuss that the the bike path was to avoid habitat block. And I don't know exactly where that language is, but I thought if you could refer to that, that would be helpful to the public as they're considering this.
Sure, thanks, Monica. The 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 branch that goes, that that would go towards Landon Drive, the commission did, as part of your warning at the public hearing, specifically have that portion of it go outside of the mapped habitat blocks. And that is what we directed the CCRPC to do, to stay out of the areas that you're regulating as habitat block.
Great, thank you, Bo.
I do think it's important just to note that, to comment that Sarah Dot made about the, any new roadway, that it is the city's policy and the state's policy that any time there is a new roadway, so if there was private development on the Hill Farm, that the the city has a complete streets policy, meaning that all users are accommodated. So as a practical matter, if there is development on a portion of the Hill Port property, it would be the city's expectation that there be facilities included for for bike, ped, bicycles and pedestrians. And so that that portion is likely to take place. So it's not just a roadway without pedestrian and bicycle amenities.
Okay, so Abby Cracker, pop up.
So I I just want to be really clear that I strongly support removing the Swift Extension from the official map. And I just want to have a clarifying question. Is the 20-foot right-of-way for the for the bike path, is that sort of a guarantee that that will not be a road? Because I know there was some initial discussion of making the right-of-way 60 feet, which could eventually actually turn into a road. So if if it's really a 20-foot right-of-way, is that a sort of a guarantee that it's not a future road?
I guess the answer to that is our our roads are wider than 20 feet. So, you know, there's not really enough space for a whole road cross-section. But we wanted it to be wider than the bike path or rec path itself. So if there's a little bit of wiggling along the way, you know, there's, there's a room for for it to follow a little bit of topography. So I think that was how we landed at the 20 feet.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds great. So I would just say, awesome, super supportive of it.
Great, thanks, Abby. So I'm seeing some more things in the chat. Kelly Morrison, Marcello, yes, I've shared in the past meetings, please remove Swift Street Extension Road from the official map and replace with a planned rec path. And another comment from Fred Luft. My wife and I also agree with Catherine, who was also in support of removing the roadway, but just having the recreation path. Any other comments or questions? Another Diane, also in support of rec path and removal of Swift Street Extension. Betty, Selma? And here, Betty, you're muted still.
Um, I guess when I saw this, I just thought, um, I've memories of a decade plus ago when we had these conversations. And Paul, what you you just talked about, that the road, if it went straight through, would accommodate pedestrians and cyclists. I think what I recall is that many of us, and like, I would agree with Sarah, the southern connector into the other neighborhood makes it that it can be, it accommodates pedestrians, cyclists, and it's a neighborhood connector rather than what I, when you just spoke, Paul, what I heard integrated into what you were saying, what insinuated into that is that a road could go in, but it would have accommodations for pedestrians and cyclists. Is that correct?
What I meant to say, Betty, was if there is development on the Hill Farm, not necessarily connecting all the way over to Swift Street Extension, but wherever there is development, it's a large enough property that some roadway serving from Heinsberg Road will likely exist. Internal roadway. And therefore, such a roadway would likely need to accommodate pedestrian and bicycle usage also. And then that rec path would then continue as, under this official map, over to Swift Street Extension. So I was not insinuating that there would be a roadway the entire way. I only meant internal roadway to the Hill Farm because it's a, it's a very large property. It's it's likely to have some kind of internal roadway.
Thank you.
Hey, in the chat, we have Kathy Chamberlain, strong support, construction of bike path and removal of Swift Street Extension. So I'm seeing a lot of support for what's shown on the map, our draft map. Any other discussion or commissioner discussion? Okay, I mean, I guess if we're not hearing much else, Sarah, Dot?
So just for the map itself, everything I've heard so far has been good. Obviously, there would be some internal roadways if the Hill Farm is developed. I get that, and it should accommodate pedestrians and bikes. I get that. For me, the key thing is that no, no motorized roadway connection be made through to join at the village at Dorset Park. The path, yes, would join there, but not a roadway. That's the part that just needs to be crystal clear. And I don't know how you depict that on on the map itself, but.
Yeah, so it says specifically, blue circle number 11, which is the spot, refers to the proposed recreation paths within 20 feet of planned city rights-of-way, i.e., should be within the right-of-way itself, not within 20 feet of the right-of-way. So so there'd be 20 feet that the city would be allowed to use. And within that, there'd be the recreation path.
Right, I I get that. But are we going to end up with an official map that still shows the two prongs? Because you're trying to keep the two options open into the future? Or what I'm kind of hearing from the people who commented is some support for what I kicked off by saying that, you know, I sort of favored the southern one more than the cut-across type one. So I'm not sure where that leaves us in terms of the map, that's all.
Okay, so I think maybe that's a commissioner discussion. Duncan, did you want to add to that? Or address that?
Just to respond to what Sarah said, I I think we we had a pretty, if my memory serves me right, we had a pretty thorough discussion about one versus two. And we decided to keep the second one in there to keep the connectivity because those are two separate neighborhoods when eventually the Hill Farm does get developed. That's going to be a separate neighborhood from, I believe that lower part is, is that oak? What's the lower neighborhood it connects to, it will connect to?
The, that's the Rye, Rye Meadows.
So it's two separate neighborhoods. And I I'm pretty sure we had a pretty thorough discussion about that. And no, we're certainly not trying to put a road or any, any, you know, appearance of a road in there. But I think we were pretty adamant about trying to keep two connections to two different neighborhoods.
Monica?
Yeah, I agree with that. And I think importantly, on the map, it will only be the the red mark. I think what might be a little bit confusing, and Paul, if you can clarify that, this on the 11, there's both the red dot, but there's also this yellow and double black. And I think the double black is indicating that there's a policy change. So that's like a temporary marking. Just so, just so that people are clear, that in that block 11, there's the red only going straight across. And then there's the red only going down with the black next to it. The black next to it is not to indicate any kind of car. It's, it is a policy change road. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly? It's the same as what we have?
Yes. Because it's on the existing one, so we had to show that it represents a change in policy by highlighting it.
So when the map goes into the book and it's done, that black portion at, the black dotted portion on 11 will not appear there anymore. The only roadway connections that will be around that 11 will be red, meaning that they are only for bike and ped, right?
That is correct. And we will triple verify, assuming that the commission votes us forward with the RPC, that the red is outside, that the southern red is, begins and ends outside of the habitat block.
And except for that part where it goes directly through, where there's already the path, which we're seeing on that mode path. And so the other point I just wanted to say, because I did hear, I heard Sarah's comment about wanting the one. I think maybe one or maybe two people agreed with that. But I I would continue to support the direct connection to Heinsberg Road, which, to be helpful, we did say doesn't necessarily have to go straight across there. We're just trying to tell any future development that we want bicyclists to safely have a dedicated path to either go south or to go basically northeast. So they can safely get directly to Heinsberg Road without having to go down into the southern neighborhood. But they can safely get by bike or ped from Swift Street over to Heinsberg more directly, laid out as best the development would be able to. So I think I I still support keeping that there, add to Duncan's point.
Hi, anyone else? It looks like in the chat, Justin Stinnott is agreeing with Monica's. Bernie?
Yes, I also agree with Monica and Duncan.
It's real quiet.
Bernie?
I also agree with Monica and Duncan.
Ted?
I guess on the map, if I'm looking at this correctly, the bike path dumps into Butler Farm. But then there's really no indication where it goes. And, you know, I've always thought that it would make sense. And I forget, I guess it's Butler Farm Road or Drive. There should be a sign there that indicates when people are biking from the south on Heinsberg Road, they may not know where the bike path is, but if there's a sign there and an indication. So, you know, rather than the bike path to nowhere, maybe there could be a, some kind of indication that Butler, Butler Drive is where the bike path continues. Or some indication from Heinsberg Road that there's a bike path there.
Yeah, that sounds like a great idea.
Ted, that sounds like a good idea. And I'll share that note, or if you want to share that note with the Bike Ped Committee, they work closely with DPW in terms of prioritizing big and small improvements.
Good, great. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Because otherwise, we can have a motion to close the public hearing. Michael?
I move, we close the public hearing.
Okay. Very good. Um, any additional commissioner discussion on the item?
And the moving to close also implies that we will be sending, uh, both the amendments and the accompanying planning commission report.
Uh, that's a separate action, Monica. This is just closing.
Okay, so, um, if you'd like to make that motion, there is a draft of what you need to say in the packet. I don't know if you have that right in front of you.
I, I move to approve amendments to the official map OM 2101 and OM 2102, and to submit the amendments and the accompanying planning commission report to the City Council.
Second.
You did not vote on the first motion.
Can you vote on closing the hearing first?
Oh, geez, I'm terrible. Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay, that was unanimous. So does she need to read the, this motion again?
She doesn't want to, I can.
I'm happy to. I, I move to approve amendments to the, uh, approve amendments to the official map OM 2101 and OM 2102, and to submit the amendments and accompanying planning commission report to the City Council.
Second.
Okay, uh, I think Ted won the second there. Um, so any, any discussion on the motion?
Hi, uh, two quick things. I'm sorry, um, the, the item that Jessica referred to earlier, blue circle number two, I was looking at it a little more closely, and it described a dedicated off-ramp to exit 14, um, to the Hill Institutions. Did want to sort of just go backwards briefly and say that our interpretation has been that adding the second lane served that same purpose of providing it. Um, I don't think that a formal action is needed, but I did want to sort of note that it reads a little bit differently, and that's, um, but that's, we've interpreted that second lane having served that purpose. And then secondly, um, Jessica, when you were reading off number nine, that says blue circle number 11, um, refers to the proposed recreation paths, um, right here, I realized that, um, there's a little error in here. Um, I had asked the RPC to get rid of the word of, right, uh, excuse me, to get rid of the word of that I just circled there, because it's saying within 20 feet of a planned right of way, which means actually outside of it. And my statement to her had been this i.e., um, I was trying to explain that it should be, that was my explanatory text to her, not what I was proposing to be on there. So what I was trying to have it say was blue circle number 11 refers to proposed recreation paths within 20, uh, within the 20, within 20-foot planned rights of way, period. So it's within the 20-foot planned right of way without the additional stuff.
Okay, um, do we need some kind of friendly amendment or something to incorporate that change in text? Or what do you need from us to make that happen, Paul?
Um, so if, if you're okay with a friendly amendment that says blue circle number 11 refers to proposed recreation plans, paths within 20-foot planned city rights of way, period.
Um, Monica, are you okay with that friendly amendment? I think you, and then Ted is a second. Would you agree to that? Okay.
Yep. Thanks, everybody.
So that would be incorporated into, um, the map and go along with the submission. Any, anything else?
My only other question, comment, again, just reminder that the, the planning commission report will be very clear that it's stating outside of the Habitat Block other than the direct connection, which is on the already mode area. Like, the, the language that we used before, that that is very clearly stated within the planning commission report.
It looks like it's drawn that way, but it looks like Paul's bringing something up here. And Paul, you're muted.
I think that it does refer to it in the, um, in that, but I was just going to double check it as the description. Certainly, if you wanted to describe it, it doesn't specifically say it. I think we just put it in the map. Um, but if you wanted to say, there's a section that says this planned infrastructure would, uh, the, the roadway would be, would be replaced in the official map with a 20-foot wide right of way and paved multi-use path, um, maintaining the same link to Landen Road. And you could say in that link, it will stay outside of, um, regulated Habitat Blocks. Intended outside of regulated Habitat Blocks.
Yes.
So I think Ted, you have.
Friendly amendment as well.
Yeah, Paul, can that be a friendly amendment?
Sure can.
Great, Monica, did you add that? And Ted is the second, okay. And then commissioner discussion, just generally, does that seem like a good thing to add, just generally?
Yep.
Great, I think that's in line with the public comment we heard, um, in our general guidance. Um, Bernie, do you?
Yeah, could I just ask for everybody's clarification? We've had a couple friendly amendments, so can we just, um, go with, um, maybe one recitation of what the final version is, just so that everybody's clear to what that is?
Sure, good idea.
Wrapping me again, or Paul, would you recite that?
Uh, go ahead, Monica.
Oh, thanks.
It's okay if, if Sue does it. I, I, it doesn't really matter who does it. I just want to, you know, make sure that in the end, everybody understands what we came up with.
Right, so we are moving to approve the amendments OM 2101 and OM 22, oh, 2102. We're submitting the amendments and the report. The report, the map will be edited slash corrected to remove the word of at, after 20 feet in map point nine to accurately reflect a 20-foot right of way. And the memo will be edited to include language that confirms the, uh, the path would be outside of Habitat Blocks.
And the portion in parentheses under number nine also deleted.
Okay, which is the last portion of.
That was intended to explain to the, um, staff person what I meant.
Is that sufficient?
Um, Duncan?
Uh, the, the path to be outside Habitat Blocks, is that just the southern part? Because the northern part already has a little part in the Habitat Block. Is that, I'm not, I'm not quite clear on that.
I know, the language is tricky, because it, it naturally goes through a Habitat Block at the actual connection to Swift Street, but that is on a currently mode area, a pre-existing mode area. So it is to go through the, 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 um, existing mode area through the Habitat Block, and then when it turns south, is to turn south outside of the Habitat Block.
Mike?
Is the, is the existing mode area the, uh, Champlain Water District right of way?
Um, Paul?
Uh, hi, folks. I, I think maybe you're, you're sort of overcomplicating this a little bit, because the intent was to connect it somewhere off the end of the right of way of Swift Street Extension through the Habitat Block, and then that the connector down to Landen Road would avoid the Habitat Block. I would, um, discourage the commission from being more specific than that, because site conditions might lead to, you know, a narrower crossing, being able to avoid a wetland if it's in a slightly different location off the right of way, and not to sort of say in the exact place of a mode path, um, just to keep it 20 feet off the end there and, and have, you know, wetland scientists review the best place for that ultimately, when that comes to be.
I, I agree. We, we know that we have to cross a wetland anyway, so I agree with what Paul said.
Um, I, so do we need to repeat that part, what that would say?
I think we're only leaving out the, the language about that it's located in an already mode place.
That, right, and that, so the part, portion of the motion pertains to page two of the Planning Commission Report, Section A. Third paragraph down, starting with this planned infrastructure. That paragraph will include an explanation that at the extension going south is to remain outside of the habit, is to be created outside of the Habitat Block.
Okay. Great, okay. Do we have a second? Ted, are you still second?
Can I, can I, I think Paul said rather than Habitat Block, a, a, a regulated resource, natural resource, is that right, Paul?
I think I said the regulated Habitat Block.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, is that clear enough to everyone?
Yep.
Okay, and Ted seconded, I'm hearing, yep, hand up. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor of what Monica said? I?
I.
I, being all hands up, so that is unanimous. Great, thank you all.
All right, thank you, folks. The next step is we'll make these edits, and we will, um, provide this to the City Council for them to receive and, um, presumably warn their public hearing on.
Great, thanks, Paul. Um, so we can continue review of the draft amendments to the land development regulations. Um, as Paul said, Chair Murray was listed on our agenda, but she's not able to join us this evening. The first thing is to receive the updated Habitat Block boundaries. Um, Paul, did you want to give us an update on the text piece?
Uh, sure, so, uh, just on the text generally with Article 12, I know, 10 and 12, I know, Michael, uh, you had asked about, uh, getting that. Um, we, um, it's in process, um, but we didn't have the final language ready for you before, um, tonight. So, um, we've got your direction, we feel good. The one thing that we are considering, I've mentioned this to a couple of commissioners, is, um, the possibility of, uh, the Habitat Blocks being considered an overlay district rather than, um, just being written, um, as text in there. Functionally, it makes no difference. Um, we've talked with legal counsel about it, but one of the, we've been hearing a lot of feedback, and I think you've been hearing a lot of feedback, of confusion of people saying, can the line be moved? Um, and, um, I think that that might be drawn from the fact that typically speaking, a resource is something that's mapped on site, and an overlay district like the floodplain overlay district, or like the interstate highway overlay district, or the transit overlay district, is a line drawn on a map. And so it might be a little bit easier for everybody to understand if it's drawn, if it's described as being an overlay district. Um, functionally, no difference, though. Uh, we expect to bring this to you, uh, towards the end of August.
So there's no downside to calling it an overlay district?
No, I've been talking with legal counsel about it. They don't see any downside to it. Um, Vermont statutes are pretty permissive, and I think that this is just a way to describe it more clearly to folks. Um, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, people are used to having a district be a line on a map, so. Okay, so what we do have in our packet is the updated mapping based on our last discussion. So I think, you know, the idea was to, you know, receive this, and if it looks different than what we had, um, expected, uh, you know, let staff know, so we can make sure to get it adjusted. Um, Monica?
Yeah, actually, this isn't from our last conversation. This is from the Habitat acceptance. So that's different from the last conversation. Just wanted to clarify that. And I do have a request. Um, when I looked at the memo, it summarizes where there are modifications. Um, I wanted to point out that the decision in that, that prior meeting regarding Habitat Block number 12, which is the one that is on the Hill Farm, the, um, vote, uh, Arrowood presented a recommendation that would have caused us to alter our original draft. And their intention for recommending that was because they felt that we had, um, there was a way they could strengthen the core, and they recommended strengthening the core um, by changing the, the layout of the map in the center and, and then instead removing some of the portion that happens to be up by 89. In that meeting, um, the vote was 3-3, and it was a tie, and therefore it defaulted to staying with our original recommendation. Um, I think that that's the only mod, that is the only, um, recommendation that we did not accept from Arrowood when it came to securing the, the core. And because there were six of us there then, um, I would like to ask that we, um, re-vote on 12 at whatever time you think is appropriate, when all seven commissioners can weigh in, so that we don't, um, have a default from a tie again, um, and just ask that we reconsider that. I understand if that request is denied, but I wanted to ask if we could reconsider Habitat Block 12 to accept Arrowood's recommended, recommended change and vote when we have all commissioners present.
Um, Bernie?
Yeah, so, um, just as a philosophical point, first, can everybody hear me? I've been having mic issues. Can you hear me, Jess?
Yes.
Okay, um, so just as a philosophical point, I, I feel pretty strongly that, that once we've, um, decided on something and voted and moved on, that, um, the practice of going back to revisit things, um, in general, I think, is not a good idea. Um, because there's, there's lots of things, I'm sure, that the votes were close, or I know the meeting I chaired a few meetings ago, we had a, a couple of 3-3s. And, um, anyway, I think it sets a bad precedent to go back and revisit things that we've already, um, reached closure on.
Um, Michael?
Yeah, uh, my interpretation of what Bernie just said is that, um, we wouldn't go back. We would just, uh, not accept, uh, Arrowood's recommendation on, on that particular, in that, in that particular case. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think, I think Bernie's point was a little more general to that, that, you know, there may be things that we did at previous meetings that, um, not everyone was at. But if we go back and re-vote on everything, um, it's hard to move forward. So I think it was a more general comment, not necessarily about the content of what Monica brought up, which, which I guess, I guess I have to agree with. It feels like, um, it's, it's hard to move forward if, you know, we only have a certain number of meetings between now and, um, the end of IZ. Feels like a unfortunate use of time, I guess. Monica?
I completely agree, in general, as a practice. I think the reason in this case I brought it up is because it, it's the, it is the only Habitat Block in which we did not accept the Arrowood recommendation, the scientists that we hired, when it pertained to impacting the core. In every other instance, we voted in the direction that would protect the core. And this one, Arrowood pointed out that the core was not getting the protection that they would recommend, and thus their, their recommendation. And so it's the, I felt that it was worth trying to ask that it be reconsidered with all seven of us. I don't even. I don't even remember who was there and who was not. The vote may go exactly the same, but I I absolutely agree. It's fine to have three threes and have a default. I felt this one was worthy of bringing to the attention again because of the core.
Duncan and Paul and then Paul?
I was not at that meeting. But I was the vote missing, but just based on this was the meeting where you went back and looked at the revisions of the decisions we had made last October.
Yeah, and we and we stuck with our decisions we made last October on the Hill Farm was was what Monica is talking.
I probably would have voted to do that. So that tells you how the vote would have gone.
Paul Ingles?
Yeah, I I had the same thought after that meeting that 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 was a vote that we probably didn't want to have come out the way that it did, because we did accept the Arrowood recommendations for everything else. And that was the last thing we talked about, and we just sort of, I thought we sort of blew it off, and it's like, but we ended up voting in a way that would would not take Arrowood's recommendation. I I I thought that was very strange, and I don't know that that was really our intent to do that. I think we, you know, we had we had accepted all the rest of the recommendations and and then in a really bizarre and unusual way, we ended up not accepting those recommendations, which were among the best recommendations that they made. It was a strange one.
Yeah. I know I voted based on the the existence of trees in that case. Michael?
Yes, I I'm I think in this case I would second Monica's proposal. I mean, we don't have to spend a lot of time on it because the whole thing has been reviewed by us in great detail. So I I think we could, in this special case, since it was the only one of all those recommendations that we that we couldn't make a decision on, let's re-vote it and move on.
Well, and and I can I Duncan first. I think we did make a decision. It just wasn't a change, but Monica, go ahead.
Well, just and just for Duncan's awareness, and I I really hesitate to say this because I'm looking at it from the science and Arrowood. But in this particular case, it also happens, I believe, to be in line with something that the property owner would have preferred. From what I understood they were saying, so it it's this unusual circumstance where it seemed like I think there's more to understand about it than prior draft versus versus just the map. So but I I it's I we're already taking a lot of time on it. I appreciate that. I'm I'm good with whatever you guys say.
Duncan?
Yeah, I guess I wouldn't feel comfortable voting on it because I hadn't fully read it all the way through. I wasn't at that meeting, so I didn't really read the packet. So I I guess I I would have stayed for the vote just because I don't have full knowledge of what we were voting on.
Paul, do you want to?
Yeah, can I suggest a procedural approach for 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 doing this kind of thing? Understanding Bernie's statement and others of not revisiting things, perhaps rather than talking about the merits of it, you could take a vote to say whether you will reconsider it or not for something like this without talking about the merits of it. If you then if it then passes, then it is reconsidered. If it doesn't pass, then there's no more discussion of it to just keep things moving along. And, you know, you can then decide if you want to put on a future agenda to do that. And if not, then there's just no more dialogue on it, too.
And with that, Paul, it would also include enabling people who didn't have who didn't have time to study the issue. They would be given time to study the issue so we could reconsider it at a future meeting. That's what you're saying? If if that's.
That would be up to you all if you decide. So I guess what I'm saying is, rather than talking about it and then deciding whether you're going to consider it for things like this in the future, if there's something that folks feel strongly about reconsidering before getting into a debate on the merits, take an action of whether it will be revisited, period. And then if it's a no, then there's no more discussion on the item, and you move on.
Okay, then just to follow up, Monica, do you want to make a motion that we like have this be official?
I was about to do that.
Okay.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we revisit Habitat Block 12 and the Arrowood recommendation to revise its line in a future meeting so that people may have time to study the issue.
Okay. Duncan?
Just to be clear, so at that meeting, it was a three, three vote, which defaulted to not accepting the recommendation.
Yeah. So so Monica, I'd like to revisit that when we're oh, like at a future meeting so we can revisit and, you know, so it's warned, you know, this this.
I'll second Monica's motion.
Yeah. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, on future, all in favor of adding that to a future agenda for discussion. Okay, so I see Michael, Monica, and Paul positive. Bernie, Ted, Duncan, and myself minus negative. Well, I think that's a good procedure, and and thank you, Monica. Okay, so any anything else on the map? Okay, then Paul, did you need any from us on the map at this meeting?
No, no, I think Michael was looking to say something. I this no action is needed because you've already taken your actions, but this was an affirmation. I know one or two commissioners wanted to make sure that what we had drawn represented what you had all voted on. So, excuse me, done a straw poll on your formal vote will be when you advance it to city council, but this was, did we get anything wrong? I don't think we did, but this is this was a chance to see it first.
Michael?
Is this the Habitat Block and Connectors map 772021 draft? That's in the packet?
Yes.
What are you talking? Well, I can't see the habitat blocks themselves because I don't seem to be able to access any layers. I see that I see the connectors.
The green is the habitat block.
I noticed that the green didn't fill in on the habitat blocks on my map either, Paul.
Oh. It didn't? It didn't show up in in the packet in yours?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, that's a surprise.
The connectors do show up and the streams and rivers do show up.
Okay. Well, based on that, I would say, Jessica, I'd recommend that if folks didn't get a chance to look at it, that we save the affirmation for a future meeting. I don't know what happened. Aforementioned gremlins. Okay.
Okay, well, it seems like maybe it printed strangely, so some people's browsing. Okay, so I guess.
Sorry about that, folks. We'll we'll get it on a future one. As I said, I think it's all good, but I do want you to all feel comfortable with it, so.
Michael?
Yes, are we? I have a question about the the map that was that Paul created that out at the last meeting, the at the council meeting, I guess, which showed the pink circles delineating which areas would be NRP. And are we going to deal with that tonight? Because if we are, then I would move that we that we accept those what outlined in pink as NRP, which it seemed the council was quite happy with.
I guess I would say those pink circles were not presented to the council as NRP. They were presented as potential areas for additional conservation using one of a variety of methods. Like we had talked about, it could be, you know, we had directed staff to come back with the tools, and I actually do think that's actually part of this next discussion about kind of how a beginning of how those tools lay out. Is that correct, Paul? So some of those could be NRP, Michael, but I think it wasn't like the exact the exact things weren't.
Yeah, sorry, I I then that I I what I think I intended was that that represented the consensus that was developed after we all have submitted our homework. If that's correct.
Yeah.
Everybody's edification. During the meeting, I drew some sort of some pink ovals to represent visually, very broadly, what you had discussed last time. Because I think I put it in writing to the council, but I think councilors were having a little bit of trouble visualizing. So I I sort of took the areas that you gave your recommendations on that were in the memo, and I just put some very broad pink circles. I I wouldn't say that they're yet in a form where that's a formal recommendation, because it was literally just an oval drawn in a circle. But we do, I do feel that we've got your guidance.
Okay, and I think that that is actually related to this next item, Paul. Right? Kind of a little bit more information about the different tools and the direction?
Yes. So let me pull up this next item here. So, as I said in the memo, staff met with had a couple of work sessions with Sharon last week following your discussion and following council. Council, I think, as Jessica represented, had some a diversity of perspectives on what should take place. And so, you know, my recommendation to you all is to bring forward what you see as the best program for the city and for the southeast quadrant and you know, represent as best, you know, what you believe works best for the community overall. There was not a unanimous, all councilors think one thing or all councilors think another thing. In in the light of of moving this forward towards tools, Sharon and I had a really good work session where we talked about an approach and then also a schedule for completion. And so I'm going to pull up what was in my memo to you. Actually, what we're recommending focusing on are the tools that you've been developing, the tools that you already have, so not to build new things. And really, I think, I'll I'll get into this in a minute when we talk about the Shelburne Road area, but my sense has been that the commission's heavy priority has been in making sure that you get the infill areas right, that that's where you really want to focus and make sure that before interim zoning ends, that you have those tools in place. In other areas, there are existing tools. I'm thinking about a long Shelburne Road, and as such, our recommendations are to, you know, maybe put a little less emphasis in that area to begin with. So overall recommendation, as you can see in the memo, in general, all development is subject to the environmental protection standards that you advance. All subdivisions would be subject to the subdivision rules that you looked at in last winter. We have minor modifications that we need to do to make sure that they match your subdivision, your your work on environmental protection standards. For the most part, that those become the rules, but a PUD does adjust them a little bit, and we'll talk about that in a second. And then, as you previously talked about, development above a certain threshold would require a master plan. Currently, you have it at four acres. We're looking at the staff level about whether that is going to have any unintended consequences in already built up areas. You know, if, let's say, the Shaw's Plaza wants to put one new building in as infill, we want to make sure that we're not having the unintended consequence of discouraging infill. So we 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 may modify that four acres a little bit or propose it that we would do for you next month. Specific to the southeast quadrant, here's our recommendation to you. This is slightly different from what you've talked about, but we think it's consistent with your goal, and let me zoom in a little bit here. So for smaller properties or properties with small buildable areas, apply the present zoning and the proposed subdivision standards. So currently, everything in the southeast quadrant that involves a subdivision of property must be a planned unit of development. That is fairly awkward, is what we found, and the DRB has found for very small ones. If you're just dividing a lot into two, what makes it a PUD? Not not much, other than the fact that it has to be. So with all the great work that you've put into updated subdivision rules, for these small ones, you will have street connectivity, you will have natural resources avoided and put into their own lots, you will have civic space set aside in a standard subdivision. You'll have the the lot sizes and block shapes that are basically in the current regulations. The essentially would stay the same as it is today for these for these lots. You would stay with the current density maximums, which is four or in certain areas, eight units per acre with the allowances for TDR transfers to get there. It's 1.2 units per acre to begin with. And then you can go up to the four or the eight. We would propose that the inclusionary be put in. For larger properties, oh, and and that you could be a conservation PUD if you choose. For larger properties, we're recommending that the, in most cases, that a conservation PUD be the tool that is required. We talked a little bit last time about the possibility of moving the NRP district. I think that that was one area that councilors were a little bit more uncomfortable with than other areas. It doesn't mean that it wouldn't take place in any places. We're still considering that it might be the best tool in that area. I think it was Area Four adjacent to the Great Swamp on between the Great Swamp and Dorset Street, but elsewhere, the type of guidance that you gave us seemed to lend itself well to being a conservation PUD where a developer has some flexibility to figure out where on the property, after looking at the natural resources, the highest priority conservation areas are under your guidance. Within the village area of the southeast quadrant, and that was the one area that you had, I'll I'll get to you in a second, Monica. Within the village area, there was generally, I think it was, five commissioners were in support of allowing that to be a compact village. So that's an area where a for larger properties or medium sized properties, a traditional neighborhood TND PUD type would be eligible. The one question that we had for that that we weren't quite sure about, and we were trying to read where commissioners were about whether a partial TND could work elsewhere. And what we mean by partial is when you're less than 10 acres, as we talked about before, you can't really achieve all of the objectives. And so a partial would say fewer building types, et cetera. But we were we were sensing some reticence outside of the village area from seeing the new approach to density in the southeast quadrant where it's no longer where it's by building type instead of by by density. And so that's why we've got these recommendations. Monica?
Okay, so now I have two questions for clarification. In the number one, you're saying that for larger properties, you'd be focusing on requiring conservation PUD in most cases. Is that regardless of what percent of the parcel is within hazards and resource level ones and such?
Based on the guidance that you as a commission gave us at your last meeting in terms of what you wanted to see in most areas outside of the village area, most of the guidance that we got was that you'd like to see a combination of some additional conservation and neighborhoods. Where 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 there was support for neighborhoods. And so, yes, I did give us a little bit of room as we put this together. And so, yes, I did give us a little bit of room as we put this together to say, in most cases, because there were a few places where you didn't, where, where there was, the guidance was, was a little more broad. But as a sort of constructing, working with Sharon to put together a proposal, that's, that's what we would recommend based on your guidance.
So just the note going forward on that, then, is I would like to make sure we all discuss, because we've kind of been talking about this 70%, right? That 70% would be conserved and 30% would be buildable, and, but we've never really gone into details on that. We also haven't gone into the details of defining conservation. Is it permanent conservation forever? Is it all of that? So I just wanted to point out those two things, that defining conservation, but also can we be sure to have a discussion about what's the number? Is it 60%? Is it 70%? Because we haven't yet done that. And then my second clarification.
Before you move on from that, let me respond to that one, Monica. Sharon and I did discuss those things, and she, at your next meeting, you'll be talking about conservation PUDs specifically. What we would recommend that you do sort of procedurally overall is the next few meetings, you're going to focus on each of the PUD types, conservation PUD type, TND, and I'll talk about infill in a minute, but get the tools set the way you like them. And then in September, when you're putting everything together, you'll have a, a last sort of re-review and say, the tools that we've now established, do we reaffirming the locations that you want them to apply? Because I think one of the challenges has been the tools in flux and the locations are in flux. So once you have the tool set and you say, now is this the tool we, do we want to apply it in these geographies? You'll have a, a, that'll be your final bite of the apple to do it then, after you've got the detail sorted.
So then my second, just ask for clarification, did I hear you say that, and I'm not sure if it was only for commercial residential, but did I just hear you say that within the SEQ, there seemed to be less appetite for the building type?
For the TND, which is the, which uses building type as, as the form of density, rather than the underlying, rather than a conservation PUD, which relies on the underlying, or the standard zoning, which relies on the under, underlying.
So your, your staff's recommendation is that we move away from building type? Period?
And around the village area in the southeast quadrant.
Village area in the southeast quadrant, okay. But elsewhere.
Elsewhere in the city, you're going to see our recommendation is still to use the TND.
Okay. With building type?
Right. But again, this is our read of, of what you all, as a commission, were, what I was gleaning from you all.
Um, Ted?
There has been some discussion about maybe allowing residential in some of the commercial areas, maybe on a, a third or, you know, third or fourth floor or something. Is that something still in this mix, or is this for farther down the way? I mean, is that putting too much added?
Are you speaking about areas that don't allow residential right now, Ted?
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking of Meadowlands, I'm thinking of, I don't think Tech Park allows residential. But it, I mean, it may be a situation where, you know, a developer can't rent that third floor and have that as an ability or maybe enticement. You know, I'm just throwing that out, I don't know if it, yeah, if it's a good idea or not. I know Counselor Emery has mentioned it several times. It just seems to be ripe for a potential development of some additional housing in where the jobs are.
So Ted, my suggestion on that would be that, I, I think that there's, that there's a really good dialogue to have with that. If you want to discuss it sort of as a go-no-go in one of those September meetings to go ahead, but if the commission as a whole feels that you haven't had enough discussion on it, you'll have the tools in place, and we'll be able to follow up on that immediately after interim zoning. I think it's a really important subject, but I'm not sure that it is specifically, you know, within time constraints that you have.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem to me to be sort of line up with exactly what the commission's very top priorities are to solve.
Okay, I got it.
Hey, Duncan, and then Michael, and then Bernie?
Paul, I just wanted to clarify something via one of Monica's questions. Did I hear you say that the recommendation was to get away from the TND with building types in the village commercial area?
No, I, I meant to say, in the, generally speaking, in the southeast quadrant, to rely on, A, the underlying zoning for smaller properties or properties of smaller buildable area, and if there is a PUD, to go to the conservation PUD in most cases outside of the village commercial, the village area. In the village area, to retain the ability to have the TND. But elsewhere, our read was that commissioners, you know, based on the guidance you've given, the tool doesn't really seem to apply in most cases, other than in the village.
I, I misheard that. I thought you said the village was not looking over that. Okay.
And I think it was Michael and then Bernie?
Yeah, to Ted's point, don't we already have an example of residential in a, in a commercial or area where a hotel was converted to apartments at the top of Dorset Street? Am I, am I right about that?
The, there, there was a conversion on Shelburne Road of a hotel recently. I think, I, I might characterize the area that Ted is talking about as being more of an industrial area, light industry, rather than a commercial area, because our commercial areas allow both currently.
What about, the pure one is between Trader Joe's and Healthy Living? Is that, would that, would, would residential be permitted on the upper floors, for example?
Yep. In that whole area is our city center form-based code district, and other than a little portion of Market Street, we're agnostic entirely towards residential versus commercial.
Yeah. Okay. Now, I, I think it would be, I think Ted's point is well taken. We could get some additional housing stock and possibly affordable as well in those, in the commercial areas.
Bernie?
Yeah, I, I'm very intrigued by Ted's suggestion, so I think putting that on the agenda when the timing is appropriate will be a good discussion to have.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or clarifications on this recommended approach? Here, and, and like Paul said, I, you know, I think as we kind of answer those questions about exactly what each of these tools is, we'll be better able to like make sure we're really applying the right thing to each area of the map as well, so.
Right, so we're not asking for a vote tonight, it's mostly head nods about whether we're generally in the right direction, because that allows Sharon to, to think about how to construct it all. So I'm, I'm going to sort of take, are we generally in the right direction here?
Yeah. One question.
Yeah, go ahead, Ted.
I'm sorry, delay the agony, but with regard to citywide.
I was going to come to that one next, Ted, if, if.
Okay.
I wanted to sort of wrap up southeast quadrant first broadly, and then talk about citywide in a moment.
I guess I have one more, but, is that okay? Go ahead. And this, maybe this is what happens in the conservation conversation, so tell me if that's the case. But if we're basically saying that within the SEQ, all PUDs have to be conservation, what we haven't also discussed yet is whether the 30% buildable needs to actually be in the same place, like, right? So that, we would discuss that when we discuss conservation PUD. In other words, are people clear that if we're requiring conservation PUDs, we are requiring more clustered dense 30% on parcels? Or is there that opportunity to say, well, actually, the 30% can be distributed throughout the parcel? We haven't decided that yet, because we haven't gone into that detail, correct?
That would be when you review the conservation PUD. I would say, generally speaking, the, the intent and purpose would be to have the 30% clustered, but that also comes down to prioritizing, you know, what, what you prioritize as natural resources, you know? It doesn't usually work out, the natural resources are all in one corner of a property. But generally speaking, it's better planning to cluster the 30% and to have it wherever possible, near existing infrastructure, so that you're not cutting through greenfield areas.
So for the notes for that conversation, because I will try to remember, but I might forget to bring this up. For those people who might have a parcel and they want to have, you know, 30%, but widely spread out to have larger homes on larger parcels, whatever, can we please remember to discuss that within the conservation PUD specifically? Okay, because I, I've never thought of a, doing a conservation PUD that way, but now if what we're, if we're requiring it in the SEQ, I can definitely see that coming up. So we should be very clear on that.
Yeah, so I think these are all great questions.
Okay. And my last note in there about within neighborhood areas, that you may, in the end, elect to have an, a partial TND in some areas. I sort of reserved that of, once you've finalized what that looks like, you may decide that there are some areas where that's appropriate in the southeast quadrant, but no action needed on that yet. We're really recommending get the tool set, and then you can decide if it fits anywhere.
Great.
All right, so I saw a lot of head nods there. Are you ready to move on to the next one, Jessica?
Yeah, I think I'm seeing some thumbs up. So yeah, let's move on to the citywide.
All right, so citywide. So following the same basic structure here, for smaller parcels or areas of smaller development areas, allow the present zoning and proposed subdivision standards. Modification from what you previously discussed to allow as an option a partial TND above four acres, and then to require it above 10 acres. Difference here is Sharon and I discussed this at, at length here, and the new subdivision regulations that you have do achieve a lot of good design principles. They require civic space, they exclude all the important natural resources, they require transportation and utility connectivity. It's challenging to fit a traditional neighborhood into all circumstances, because it, by definition, is its own self-contained unit. That it's, it's more than just what the subdivision requires. It is moving away from a density-based zoning to one that goes to building types. It has a lot of very specific elements to it. It must have certain park features nearby, must have a non-residential component. We felt that allowing it as an option above four acres would be a good first step, especially knowing how brand-new this is, but not requiring it until you get to 10 acres of buildable. And then, as you had previously discussed, for parcels that have more than 50% hazards and level-one resources, allowing the conservation PUD as an option. And that would be generally citywide.
So those, those thresholds.
Residential.
So those thresholds actually are pretty close to what we had talked about before. You know, having, you know, we had gone back and forth about the four acres and how four acres might be too small for all the components, but there might be, so there might be some leniency in some of the components. So, so this feels very much like what we've talked about all along, to me, I think.
Yeah, I like that particularly, like with having to require like three different housing types versus maybe two, or that, that does feel, having some flexibility there does feel good.
Um, Ted?
Yeah, I mean, just Monica's last point, I mean, the chicken and cider mill, I bike there a lot, sort of warming up before I head out. And every single house is exactly the same, the, the, the one that's closest to me. I forget what the, the name of it is, Cider Mill One and a Half or what have you. But, so having three really makes sense, just from an aesthetic standpoint. The question I had, I, I think I know the answer, but we just dealt with southeast quadrant, but then we say citywide, we mean citywide X, the southeast quadrant. Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Yep.
And, and when I say, and, and I say in residential areas, so, you know, there's obviously certain areas that are not zone residential, this isn't trying to upend that. This is really in areas that allow residential uses. So not the airport district, for instance.
Um, Duncan, go ahead.
Yeah, on, on the partial TND, I guess, so when we get to finalizing, talking about that, that's where we determine what, what is in and what is out in a partial, or what, what the parameters are.
Correct. Yeah.
You know, something that just came up, I wonder, Paul, you talked about some of the great things that are in the subdivision, and I can't remember if we did require different types of housing, different types of building, you know, I know our current regulations say some big thing about varying the types of buildings, but do our subdivision regulations include any of the building type variations?
Um.
Maybe that's something.
I will have to go back and look at that, whether it's either in the subdivision or in the master plan. They, certainly, there's incentives in the subdivisions and in your, in your underlying zoning to have some diversity, because through the underlying zoning, you get different lot sizes for different types of uses, and so you would benefit from having, as a developer, you'd benefit from being able to achieve different types to, especially once you've, you know, in a classic subdivision, you, your natural resources don't count towards your density. Or they don't, they don't, you don't get to move them around. And so the way that you achieve more density in a classic subdivision is you use lot sizes, which are already in our existing zoning, and you look at, oh, I can put a duplex on 12,000 square feet, and I can put a single family on 9,500 square feet. So it sort of incentivizes somebody to want to do some duplexes in a classic subdivision. But we'll check to see if there's anything required in there. I think that's a good circle back.
Duncan?
Yeah, actually, Paul, it would be helpful, at least for me, I don't know about other councilors, but before our next meeting, we're maybe in the packet for our next meeting with the PUDs, could we get that subdivision to master plan language again?
That was Sharon's specific suggestion to me to give to you for your next meeting, so yes.
Yeah, because I see some other suggestions for meetings, because it looked like, oh, where did it go? The next one was also to look at, start to look at the conservation PUD, it looks like, as well.
Right, so Sharon suggested that you have the master plan and the subdivision rules to refamiliarize yourselves, because it's been a few months since you've looked at them.
Okay, Ted?
I mentioned this before, but I'd really encourage anyone who has not gone into the Rye development to go in there. They, I think they have probably seven or eight different styles that are the ones that are most northernly at this point, but very interesting, that, that whole complex, but really gives you an idea. It's a village, you know, it would, all kinds of different, different styles. So they've, they've gone above and beyond even what we're sort of thinking about, but really encourage you to just buzz by and take a look at it.
Okay, other questions on this, or should Paul keep kind of going through?
All right, so next section, I see a lot of head nodding here. So next section here is commercial industrial areas. So, um, we had talked previously about the infill PUD, and I think that there's a couple of different uses of the term infill PUD, and, and I think I, you know, we might have used them interchangeably. So one was how to make it work in really small situations of a residential PUD, two to four acres of a mini TND, and the guidance from the commission was, let's not do that. And that's what we're, what we're sticking with. The other purpose of it is to use it in the context of built-up areas. And so currently, under And so currently, under the existing regulations, a lot of people use PUDs for a lot of different reasons. Some is to get minor waivers on things, some of this to legitimately deal with pre-existing circumstances. Sharon and I feel, both feel that it's important that if you, if, when we get rid of the current very wide-open PUDs, that there still be some tools in the toolbox for pre-existing built-up areas to get some modifications from the very, from the more strict subdivision rules that you will now have in place. So there's going to be, you know, Champlain Water District, main lines, there's going to be power lines. There'll be roads that sort of already don't quite connect to one another. There will be largely built-out properties that are looking to do some redevelopment. So giving, the infill PUD is really meant to be gray field and green and and already built-up areas, some flexibility for. So Sharon, with your okay, would plan to bring that to you at your first meeting in August to talk about how that tool would work. We do think it's important that, you know, if we don't have it, then there is no flexibility at all. A very, very limited flexibility, which will be challenging in the subdivision in a built-up area.
Monica?
I think this is a great idea. And just to be clear, I think that when the planning commission before agreed to not pursue infill on the smaller parcels, it wasn't to never get back to it, it was to not focus on it during interim zoning, just to be clear. But at some point, it would be something we would get back to. But I agree with this for now. I support that.
Yeah, well, thank you. And, you know, I wouldn't normally have said that this is a tool that has to happen with interim zoning. But because you're replacing your existing PUD structure, we don't want to create a new problem. So that's why we're recommending that we keep it for now.
Okay.
Number three, Paul. It says, under a related subject, these areas have maximum building height, yada, yada. And then it says, up to the maximum bulk of the building. I don't know that term.
Yeah, so this was the last area that I wanted to talk with you about. Some things you've already talked about, about inclusionary zoning, site plan standards. There was some indication from commissioners that you'd like to address, at least in part, the TDR circumstance. So we have an idea for you. It goes a little bit further than what some things that you talked about before were. Ted, what I mean by building bulk is, in certain zoning districts, and I'm thinking specifically of along Shelburne Road, you've already set a specific maximum height of five stories for buildings. There's no waivers allowed beyond that. And you have set a maximum lot coverage and building coverage and setbacks. So what is created by that is the bulk of the building. It's essentially sort of moving in the direction of a form-based entered where you've set how big a building total. Does that make sense as to what bulk means?
Did you want to talk a little bit more about ER or Michael? I don't know if you look like you were turning your mic on.
I was just agreeing with Paul.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions on these related subjects?
So let me introduce this TDR idea for you. And I don't need a decision on it tonight, but I wanted to float an idea to you. Along Shelburne Road, you have the C1R15 and C1 Auto District. Currently, the way it works is you have this maximum building bulk that we just talked about. If you wanted to have, say, an office building, use up that entire building bulk, they can do it. There's no cap. The cap on the amount of commercial space is the bulk of the building. However, on the residential side, you have an additional cap, which is a maximum number of dwelling units per acre. And so while you could have a, you know, take a one-acre parcel, if you could put a five-story building on it and it could all be commercial, if you took that same five-story building and made it residential, it cannot be more than 15 units on that acre total, other than inclusionary bonuses. Something you could consider doing is you could eliminate that residential cap. You could say you can build 15 units on that one acre in that five-story building, plus whatever inclusionary offsets or bonuses you get. And then you could say, and then sky's the limit for the number of dwelling units you choose, as long as you're within that five-story building, that is already what you could have built if it was commercial, put as many dwelling units in there as you want. For anything above the 15 units an acre plus the inclusionary, you buy TDRs. So, you know, it could be a way of encouraging more residential. It could be a way of using TDRs. The one thing I would like for you to consider is that does, right now, Shelburne Road skews towards commercial. This would probably balance it or skew it a little bit in the other direction. And so I just want you to, you know, consider that that is the side effect. It may be a very good side effect, but it is potentially a little bit of a side effect.
Michael?
Yeah, just on the commercial side, Paul, if you gave an example of a five-story building which reaches its, its building bulk limit. But TDRs could be used to expand the lot coverage and/or add another, instead of five, limiting it to five stories, it could be six or seven.
Right now, you have allowed for an increase in lot coverage through the amendment that you passed last year. I think I suggest in the short term that if you do want to make a change, that just eliminating the density cap by itself would create a pretty big opportunity. I would, I would be reticent to recommend that you increase it above five stories until you've really thoroughly reviewed the urban form of that. Because once you go past five stories, you're in a very different, you've moved out of wood construction largely. You're into a whole new type of thing. And so I might say that would be a good thing to explore at a later date. But if you wanted to do something in the shorter term, you could increase or eliminate the cap.
Yep.
Monica?
And going along with that, when time is right to discuss it, I love the idea. Thank you for bringing it. But I do also think we need to think very carefully about how we shift to residential on that crazy, busy, noisy, awful road. And it may require additional design discussions like setbacks and things like that that aren't really on our radar right now and we weren't going to budget time for. So my point is, I love the idea. I would be scared to just do that without also discussing how to make sure these are respectful to the residents, like they're not right on the road. They're, you know, what can we do? There's a great example of the one that's setback. So anyway, just if we do put this forth, can we please make sure we have some time to discuss how we would envision more residential on that crazy road?
If commissioners did want to take a little bit of time to do that, I think that could be a really great idea. I would encourage maybe either communicating with the property owners of the ones that have been fairly recently built. I'm thinking Lark and Terrace, Bartlett Brook Apartments, or possibly even, you know, seeing if you can do some surveying of folks and ask them, what's their life experience of living in those areas and pros and cons?
Yeah, I have a resident in each of those two. So that's exactly what I'm hoping we can make sure we discuss. Thank you.
Along those lines, Jessica, may I read from the piece that I sent you?
Sure, Sue. Go right ahead.
So Sue, just for the minute takers purposes, which is you, this is Sue. And if you don't have a video, so just, I'm just announcing you, Sue.
Okay, I received recently the AARP publication. And in it is an article entitled "A Not Very Silent Killer." And it contains this paragraph, it's written, by the way, by a woman named Kimberly Miller, who is a health and wellness researcher. The paragraph is entitled "Noise and Disease." "Daily noise exposure may figure significantly in your risk of severe stroke, according to a recent study in the journal Environmental Research." Researchers found that living in a noisy area, like a city or near a highway, increases your risk of severe stroke by 30%, while living in a quiet, green area can reduce the risk by up to 25%. The article goes on with more specifics as to what goes on in the brain, et cetera. Something you may want to consider when you're putting people in commercial areas. While you're protecting the environment for future generations, you don't want to be, to have the unintended consequence of risking their health and their lives.
Yeah, thank you, Sue. That was great. Okay, any other discussion on these items?
So moving forward, our suggested schedule would be the following. At your next meeting, which I will not be at, Sharon will be talking with you about conservation PUDs. Then on August 18th and 24th, you would look at infill PUDs and the traditional neighborhood. I am recommending on your schedule that you at least hold August 31st as a date because I think, you know, days are running short and I think you'll find that you'll want to have that one. I put some descriptions of the PUD types in your packet for tonight, only to sort of jog your memories. You'll be talking about these specifically with Sharon over the next couple of meetings. So there's nothing that I needed from you tonight on them. It was just sort of a reminder of what these are looking like. Yeah, Monica?
Sorry, so if we're doing conservation PUD in the next meeting, can you either ask for a legal mind to be there? Or can you ask a legal mind to help us understand the definition of conservation?
I'll send a note tonight to both our city attorney and, or deputy city attorney and Sharon. And I'll ask them to touch base with one another to be prepared to talk about that, pros and cons and what your options are at your next meeting.
And the cities preferred, you know, if there is a, if there's a, what's the recommended legal, you know, just for us to understand.
Yep.
Michael?
What is our plan to finish with Articles 10 and 12? I see we've got a lot of other stuff coming up, it's coming agendas, but we're almost there. When are we going to finish?
My hope, Michael, would be realistically to bring, so I think that I've gotten the guidance from the commission on what you need. Correct me if I'm wrong. But my hope would be to bring it at the August 31st meeting, if you have that as a special meeting. So that way you've got a little bit of time. Realistically, I'm not going to be touching it. I've got Taylor Newton from the RPC has done most of the work, but I just haven't had a chance to review it. And I don't want to give you something that's not complete.
End of August is a good enough answer for me.
Right, can we just, I know the schedule is later on the agenda here. But I guess I would recommend we, we set that August 31st meeting as meeting. Like, I feel like we're, you know, we already have a big topic we want to add to that agenda, knowing that the next three meetings are pretty full with the PUD work and subdivision. We reserve the date, maybe, Bernie?
I was just, I was just going to say I'm okay with that.
I have some, Duncan?
I'm finally the 31st. My question is, when are our other three meetings in August?
Oh, between now, so between now and then, so we have, I will tell you most of the dates. So we have the July 27th. And then we have a joint meeting with the city council the first week of August. And I think there were still two dates that they were deciding between, I think it was the third or the fourth of August. And they were checking with the speakers, so I don't think that was set yet. Then we have the 18th of August, which was a reschedule of our, what would have been the first meeting in August. But there were so many people away that for the 10th, I guess, so we rescheduled that for the 18th. Then at the 24th of August is our regular scheduled meeting. And then the 31st is actually a fifth Tuesday, so there's very few other city meetings that week. So we were thinking that we would maybe add that one.
Okay.
And I guess I'm, I'm going to be in transit on the 18th, so I won't be able to chair, but I'll be able to participate likely. So I'll coordinate with Bernie or, you know, on the chairing piece of that one meeting.
And we'll be able to do hybrid, remote on those, once you're in the new building, Paul. I just, I won't be in, I likely won't be in town on 8/31.
So we haven't talked about a policy overall about this. I think broadly speaking, our, you know, this will be the decision of each committee and commission and board. Our recommendation would be that, once we're in the new building, that we, that boards generally all meet in person unless somebody is out of town, similar to what you were doing in the past. When, I think it was Bernie was, was in remotely for a few months. That's, that's a good reason because somebody's out of town. But if folks are in town to be in person, to have that connection, we do anticipate being able to have the public, being able to participate remotely. And, you know, I think our expectation is that's going to be the long-term because it's been very popular for members of the community to not sit in hard plastic chairs for hours on end to weigh in on an item. So surprisingly.
That's good news. At least good news for when, when some of us, we get in on goToMeeting.com.
Okay, so I think we skipped, so C was an update. We skipped the minutes and went straight to the upcoming meeting schedule, is what I think just happened. And we've generally agreed on adding August 31st, since we have, we believe we'll have agenda. I think we'll have no shortage of agenda meetings, so.
Sorry, can I ask another timing question? So we're going to be talking about the conservation PUD next, and that will be in July, when the committees still are not, the other committees are still not in session. And therefore, a committee cannot be present to give their opinion. And I think that the Affordable Housing Committee is going to want to, you know, somehow officially be sure to be there, weigh in, have comment. Can you maybe just think about how you suggest they do that when they're not supposed to be meeting?
So I guess two things to that, Monica. One, to be clear, under the open meeting law, another committee, a quorum of another committee can attend the meeting of the group that is meeting. And that's not a separate meeting. So if five members of the Affordable Housing Committee come to a city council or planning commission meeting, it's been warned as a city council or planning commission meeting, that's fine. That's not, it's not also a meeting of the Affordable Housing Committee unless it's a joint meeting. So that's perfectly fine. Broadly, my recommendation to, for all committees would be, the commission's going to be taking time over the next month and a half to put together the drafts that you are, that you want to put up, run up the flagpole for folks. And so to pay attention and to, once you've got a draft for people to look at, that you say, this is looking pretty good, they'll have September and then through your public hearing process and the council's public hearing process to. They'll have September and then through your public hearing process and the council's public hearing process to weigh in on that.
Okay, um. Well, it looks like we have some things in the chat here. Um. Right, so Paul, do you want to address Sandy's question? I'm not completely sure if I understand.
Yeah, um, Sandy's question is, if TDRs were used to build micro dwelling units, would this run up against our minimum requirements for dwelling units? Um, I I think that there's some detail to be worked out in there, but in terms of minimum sizes, they could stay in place. And in terms of anything that has to do with uh, the offsets that you get or the bonuses that you get, um, I think that those could all be retained under the, from the existing regulation, and this would be often beyond that. Um, broadly speaking, but we haven't written this. We're just sort of speaking about an idea.
Okay, and then I see one that looks like it's just a organizer. So Chris Jensen asked, will there be public comments tonight on the Habitat Block, et cetera, discussion tonight? So um, Chris, our our Habitat Block discussion was mainly about whether or not the map represented our previous discussion, just for clarification. It's actually been um, pushed to a future meeting because not all the commissioners actually had the the map. Right for them. So but since you are here, I think if you want to, um, and you waited all the way till nine thirteen, if you want to um, let us know what's on your mind, you can go ahead.
Have I managed to unmute myself? Oh, I think I have. I think I have. Um, thank you. And I don't mean to, um, I'm sort of jumping in late to this, late to this game. Um, but I did, I did want to express some concern um, about the additional regulations that seem to be contemplated. And my concern particularly, um, uh, we represent, I'm I'm an attorney with Lisbon Leckerling. We represent um, Joe Larkin and Alan Road Land Company. My concern really is um, specific to the so-called Merso parcel on Heinsberg Road. Um, and I I look at these proposed amendments as adding um, a number of additional layers of of regulation to that parcel. Um. I'm not, you know, based on the Arrowwood study, which back pre-COVID, we were assured was not going to be used for planning and zoning. Here we are. Um, I I recognize you guys have done a ton of work on this. So many people have. Um, but I'm I'm concerned that we are really treating similarly situated parcels differently and that we are potentially rendering this parcel completely um, undevelopable for reasons that are not necessarily related to conditions on the ground. Um, so what, um, and and Joe Larkin sent you guys an email um, a few days ago, which I think really set out his concerns really well. Um. I think the the landowners, in particular the large landowners that are really going to be impacted by this um, would would like an opportunity to um, a- address their concerns and have some time to propose development that balances the need for things like housing and the need for conservation. So that that's all I have. I won't take any more of your time. It's it's getting late.
Very good. Well, thank you, Chris. That's well, I mean, we'll continue to take input um, from from all people, including the landowners, so. Um. Monica and then Paul?
Can I make a suggestion, given what we just discussed tonight, which came from this feedback from the meeting, which seems to the new, the new insight that we're discussing tonight is that we may be requiring conservation PUDs in the SEQ period. And so to comments like what we just heard, it might be, and the request to present a plan, right, was what, which is what Joe put in his letter to us. I wonder if them just getting that, you know, this um, this new direction that we may be pursuing, or this decision that we may be pursuing, that may help them. Because when we did have our last meeting, it was more conceptual in terms of, okay, more conservation here and this. But now we're basically saying, just think in terms of if it's a conservation PUD, that in itself may give them some more specifics that they can work with that will either help them raise concerns they have, or will assure them that it enables them to have the flexibility that they need. Does that make sense? So let the large landowners know proactively about this, 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 this conversation, so that they can be, you know, thinking about that and be prepared. Because it may turn out to resolve some problems. Actually, they may find that, okay, good, this actually is a good solution. Or they may have very specific feedback for us. Is there a way to do that? Other than the fact that we just said it right now? Yo, landowners know that this is the direction, so use, use the conservation PUD guidelines to consider what impact this would have. Is that helpful?
I think it is, and I do think Joe's following along in general. Um, and you know, I think what you just said, Monica, is actually in line with his verbal public comment from the council meeting last week, you know, requesting that instead of putting another line in the sand on that that high area, um, you know, to to kind of create a framework that gives some flexibility on kind of exactly where those that additional conservation might be located. So I
And to to that end, um, Monica, you mentioned earlier about sort of what the numerical numerical threshold will be with the conservation PUD, seventy percent, et cetera. I think one of the things Sharon's going to speak with you about in two weeks is where do you want to set the threshold? And do you want to incentivize things to do more? Um, so you you know, there's two pieces. It's not just an all or nothing. It could be um, X percent, and then if you conserve ten percent more than that, then you maybe get a small density bonus or something like that within the developable area. So you can think about those tools. Um. I have other, um, there's been a couple of references tonight to the um, council's acceptance of the open space report. Um, and I just wanted to be clear on that subject. Um, you know, fully understanding the point that um, Ms. Jensen made. The council uh, said, in accepting, this is for the open space committee report, and accepting the report, the council states and affirms that the report is to be used for planning purposes only. The report's results and recommendations may be used and applied in the development of future policy rules or regulations. The report itself, however, carries no policy weight without further action by the council and and is not a regulatory document or supporting documentation there too. So I just want to be clear that the council never said that the result of those reports can't be used in the future. They just mean the report itself did not have a regulatory role. So I just wanted to sort of set that record clear for everybody, that there's no, there's nothing that is discouraging the council or planning commission from learning from it. It just in and of itself, the report is not a regulatory document.
That's helpful. Thank you. Okay, so I think we muddied where we are on the agenda a little bit. Yeah, I think I think that was the end of the LDR discussion, um, and we can move on to the minutes.
Move, I would move to accept the minutes of July twenty-second and June twenty-ninth as written.
Okay, Duncan seconded with his bunny ear fingers, and any discussion on the minutes? Monica?
Sorry, Paul, I didn't know you were going to be here tonight, so I decided to bury this, but since you're here, I did, there's one comment of mine in here that I wanted to clarify. Uh, was talking about the phasing of neighborhoods. Can I provide you with um, the summary of what I believe I said, and you can tell me that um, it's one portion of
So what I would suggest is, Monica, if you'd like to make a change to it, why don't you pull those ones from being approved tonight as a commission? And then we'll bring the other ones back with your correction rather than trying to do something on the fly.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, it was the um, I think it was the last one.
So we're going to remove June twenty-ninth from the motion. If Michael
Yeah, you know
I'll accept.
You know what, based on what we talked about tonight, never mind. I'm good with it. Don't worry about it. Sorry, I'm good.
Motion stands with June twenty-second and June twenty-ninth minutes then. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, on favor? All right. I'm seeing all thumbs up. Great, very exciting. So we um, completed the meeting schedule portion of the minutes. Um, and I reminded here, it's either August second or August third is our joint meeting with the council to be determined. And there was something in here
It wasn't the third or the fourth. It's either the Tuesday or the Wednesday, right? Not the Monday?
I thought it was the Tuesday or the Wednesday. Um.
There is already a council meeting on the second, so it's either the third or fourth, it's still open as to which.
Okay, good. Um, and there had been a note in here about the Burlington Comprehensive Development Ordinance. Any any, anything on that?
Madam Chair, I have guests from California here, so I'd like to leave if I may.
You may leave at any time, yes. So if anyone else had anything on the Comprehensive Development Ordinance, we could discuss it. But I'm not hearing anything, so I think then we can adjourn. Great. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Paul. Enjoy your time.
Oh, there's George.
That's a little Paul Connor right there.
Well done, Paul.
Oh, that's awesome.
Enjoy, Paul.
All right, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Enjoy your time.
To all of you and um, look forward to having Delilah will be their staff person at your next meeting. And um, Sharon will be there to help you through conservation PUDs.
Very good. We will not bother you. So everyone is supposed to bother me instead of Paul for the next many weeks. That is the plan. Yeah, so feel free to get in touch. Great, thanks.
Good night, everyone.
Hi, thanks for sticking around, Jessie.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.